Everyone and welcome to the City Council meeting on Tuesday, June 25th. I call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the first item. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 18th, 2024.
Are there any corrections or comments? I see none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six, uh, five to seven, five to zero. Two people are absent. All right. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda items one through 18.
Are there any items to be polled? I would like to poll items 13 to 17. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda without 13 to 17?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes six, zero. Regarding items 13 to 17, may I have Sally answer a couple of questions?
Good morning.
Good morning, Sally. I wanted to know where we are at in terms of the 300-plus homes that are for sale. Five items look to be five properties that are going to be sold if approved. And what's the application process?
Sure. So to date, we've sold 24 of the single-family homes. Twelve of those were to individuals, including two existing public housing residents. The other 12 were from investor LLCs. We have 18 additional contracts pending. Once we receive an application or a contract, we come to terms. We actually have to submit a request to HUD for the release of the Declaration of Trust. So this closing time takes a little longer than the typical closing time. Then we coordinate with the buyer, with our real estate office, to go to closing on those properties. In addition, we currently have an RFP open for 57 single-family homes that are layered with the Affordable Housing Fund. So that RFP is open and will close on July 12th. It is the opportunity to bid on properties, apply for affordable housing funds for the, for the, any renovations that are needed. Also, apply for, or home funds for down payment assistance for homeowners, or project-based vouchers for rentals. And that RFP is available both on the vendor self-serve, a link from the housing website, and as well as the applications are submitted through an online portal called Zoom Grants. All of that information is available at wichita.gov/housing, and you can get to the link.
Would you repeat, I'm sorry, the, you said that 24 homes have sold, 12 went to investors, two went to?
Two existing public housing residents were able to purchase the home they were in. And of the 18 pending contracts, three of those are also pending public housing residents.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Do we have the environmental reports done on all the houses?
All of the houses that are for sale, yes. We have to actually have that environmental review done before we submit the application to HUD.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sally. I motion to approve consent agenda items 13 to 17.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated June 24th, 2024.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday on June 24th for the following items. Engineering, we have the 2024 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program Joint and Crack Seal Phase III for PBJ Construction Incorporated, awarded to the engineer's estimate of $100,000. We have the 2024 Outsource Paving Preservation Program CIP Crosswalk Improvements for Roston Construction LLC in the amount of $87,102 awarded for the engineer's estimate. For purchasing, we have the Wildland Fire PPE Clothing and Personal Deployment Gear for Ed M Feld Equipment Company Incorporated in the amount of $76,027.50. This is award redirection for one year with two one-year options to renew. We have the groundwater monitoring, well sampling for Wellfield for Integrated Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $43,652. We have traffic signs for Vulcan Incorporated DBA Vulcan Signs for $268,122.65. We have the displacement and injector pumps, actuator, gearbox replacement for Mead O'Brien Incorporated in the amount of $90,030. And we have the SmartSheet Work and Project Management System Annual Software Renewal for Smartsheet.com Incorporated in the amount of $56,700. This is how to become a vendor with the city. These are open requests for proposals out on the street today. And I'd be happy to try to answer your questions. I recommend your approval.
Any questions for staff?
On the first, Josh, on the first couple, the lowest bid wasn't taken, is that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you, Councilperson Johnston. The process for us is, is that we use the low bid as the identifier to who to award. A city practice historically has been is we award above the bid for the engineer's estimate because the pricing that they provided is locked in at a rate unit. That rate unit, you can expand with additional services under City Code 2.64.
Okay. And the next one, same thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a low bid of $74,086 by $500 roughly. We awarded it above that for the engineer's estimate so we can get more services at that unit price.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members, Paul Gunselman, Public Works and Utilities for the Record. This morning, I have a few new petitions for your consideration. The signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement district, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Settle Path Edition located in District 5, the project will provide water, stormwater sewer, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements for new residential development. The Paddock at 127th Street located in District 2, the project will provide water improvements and paving improvements for a new residential development. Clear Creek 3rd and Clear Creek 4th Editions located in District 2, the project will provide water, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements. And the remaining petition, Bunker Hill Edition located in District 3, the projects will provide water, stormwater drain, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements. It is recommended that the City Council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. I will stand for questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none. I motion to approve the petition for public improvements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
We'll start with councilmember appointments.
Madam Mayor, with an appointment, appoint Dr. Justin Henry to the Ethics Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to reappoint Terry Jones to the Wichita Employee Retirement Board.
I see no further appointments. I motion to approve the appointments as stated.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, zero. Councilmember comments, starting with District number one.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say a huge thank you to our Parks and Rec team and Police Department for the Unity and Community Walk. Police went above and beyond in helping out and leading the parade and running water to folks. And Parks did as well, getting everything set up. So it was a wonderful turnout, wonderful event. I think the message was sent to community to support peace, stand against violence. But it was a great event, and I really appreciate the city staff that worked really hard to pull all that off, some of it last minute. So, thank you.
I would just like to say thank you to staff and my colleagues, and to the community that showed up to the, I don't know if it was the second or third now, a community meeting to discuss potentially putting an option on Park. It was a great meeting. We were able to share some newer information, and Officer Nate from the Hot Team shared some information about some safety concerns. So I thought it was a really, really good meeting. So appreciate everyone that was able to make it.
I would just like to say again, echo the same messages, but also thank you to community for coming together, for rally, for peace. There are now events planned for the future. So the first one happened to be in District number one. Thank you to the leadership of Councilmember Johnson and the Greater Wichita Ministerial League. The second one will be held in Councilmember Hoheisel's District, District number three, on July 13th. And then on August 13th, it's the Community Wide Neighborhood Night Out in Wichita. You can find more information at wichita.gov/nnoneverhoudnightout. And then in September, we're hoping to do another event. So there will be multiple opportunities to stand for peace in our community and to stand against violence. And that was the purpose of the very first Unity in the Community Rally for Peace. So thank you for everyone who showed up. In addition to, there were multiple events that happened this weekend where community building was crucial, and I'm just really grateful for all the individuals who came out to not just volunteer their time, worked these events, but also participated in these events. So thank you. And last but not least, right now, we have over 1,000 athletes from all around the U.S. at Century 2, participating in the Junior Olympics USA Boxing. So young people who are disciplined and team-oriented and competing. So there are tickets available, including some limited tickets for young people under the age of 18 who would like to participate. And if you would like more information, you can contact me at L W U at wichita.gov. I see no further comments, so I motion, I guess, to move to workshop or adjourn. I motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes seven.
Nay.
Oh, motion passes six, one.
Mayor, thank you. We have one topic for today's workshop. We decided we've been overworking you, I think, for some of the last workshops. This is a very important issue. It's identified by our community as one of the top concerns that they have, and that's street maintenance. We thought it would be appropriate to talk about our approach to street maintenance work. I will remind you that as a result of your priority setting, you will not only receive an operating budget recommendation from staff, but also a CIP recommendation. And just a preview, the recommended CIP will contain $149 million for street maintenance projects and street maintenance work for the 10-year period covered in the document, including a new program for the reconstruction of concrete streets. There'll be $20 million placed in the CIP, at least in the recommended document for your consideration. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary Jansen, who will go through, along with his staff, the process that we follow in setting our street priorities, and obviously looking for any comments and feedback you have. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Manager. Mayor and Councilmember Gary Jansen, Public Works and Utilities. I'm going to be brief and kick this off, and then I'm going to turn it over to Aaron. As the manager mentioned, every year in the CIP, there are funds set aside for street pavement maintenance. I think this year is around $13 million. Generally, in the fall of each year, we bring to the council a proposed plan for the following year of what we want to do with that funding. What we wanted to talk about today is what happens behind the scenes, how this program has evolved over the years, the decision support tool that we use so that you can understand what it is that we do with that funding, and to try to get to a point of optimizing that investment. So this has evolved over the years. Aaron and I joke around somewhat that it doesn't seem like it was that long ago. I used to go to public meetings, and the concerns that were brought up at those public meetings about the street in somebody's, in front of somebody's house, that's where we went to next, right? That was not entirely true. We have had, used data analytics for some time. We've used pavement condition for some time. But we have evolved what I consider significantly since 2011, when Alan King became the director. He brought a program with him, with him, that we have since really taken to a different place, I think, of using data analytics. This decision support tool takes all kinds of information, brings it together. Aaron's going to talk about the details. And it really looks at optimizing that investment across all 5,200 lane miles, you hear that number a lot, across our street network, across all six districts. I think we've done a great job with the program. It's evolved to look at different treatments that Aaron's going to talk about. Some of them aren't always popular with the citizens, even from an aesthetic standpoint. And I only mention that because that has become a factor in how we've approached some of these projects. The manager mentioned concrete streets, Aaron's going to talk about too. Because of the nature of concrete streets, it's great when concrete streets were first built, they last a long time, but they are very expensive to maintain. We can eat up so much of that budget just trying to work on concrete streets. So we're hopeful that that additional funding is able to stay in the CIP so that we can start making a little bit more of a dent. Anyway, I don't need to say I don't think much more about that. Aaron Henning is our Assistant Director. He oversees all things public works related, if you will, within our department, overseeing our street maintenance division, fleet, facilities, environmental health group. Aaron has, in my opinion, perfected this about as much as someone can. He's done some tremendous work and worked really hard over time. This is a massive program. He tries to show it to me, and it just makes my head spin. So I say I trust him. Anyway, he's got some really good stuff to share with you today, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council. As Gary mentioned, we do have a pretty vast network of paved streets, more than 5,200 lane miles. We try to put that in perspective by comparing that to a two-lane road. It's enough lane miles to build a two-lane road as the crow flies from Los Angeles to New York City. And there's enough left over to connect Wichita to that straight line as well. And I think at this point, there's even more extras. The replacement value today for the entire network is approximately $2.18 billion. In order to best manage that vast network, the city has long employed a full-time technician to regularly assess and update the conditions of city streets. In addition to confirming things like length, width, and other characteristics, the technician calculates what's called a pavement condition index, which is a rating from zero to 100, with 100 being a theoretically perfect or brand-new street. They do this by looking for distresses, like the ones described on the slide, and they look at those in terms of severity, both severity and density. And those result in deductions from that theoretically perfect 100 to arrive at a current PCI for any given street. The city does employ its own rating method. It's based on the American Society for Testing Materials Standard Practice for Roads and Parking Lots Pavement Condition Index surveys, but it doesn't follow it exactly. And that's so that we can complete a full round of inspections once every approximately 12 to 18 to 24 months, depending on staffing levels and other factors. It's usually in the 18 to 24-month range, though.
I had a question.
Yes.
So is that publicly available, the PCI number?
The PCI? I don't believe so at this point. I don't believe it's been made public anywhere.
We get multiple questions, often from multiple different districts, about my street needing special attention.
Sure.
I think it would be helpful if citizens would see where their street lies in terms of the PCI.
And I'm going to talk about during the presentation, that's a big part of the change that we had made back in 2011, was to move away from the PCI because we don't feel like it gives us, or the public, or anyone else, very good information to go by. It's a little bit misleading on a number of levels, but you may find otherwise, and we can certainly change course at any point.
Real quick, Aaron.
Yes.
Right. We, when we were at one of the conferences a couple of years back, they, one of the presentations had to where somebody would go around in a vehicle like this, and they would have a, like a video sensor that would be scanning the road as they went along, and that would help in the grading process. Are you familiar with this?
Yes.
Is that something we have considered utilizing?
That is something we considered. Around the same time that we developed the DST, we also outsourced a third-party verification of our street ratings. And we've had the option to go with a mechanical method like that and chose not to, mainly because it would be more expensive for us to do going forward, and we didn't feel like we were going to derive a whole lot of benefit from it, given the situation that we have with funding and needs and all of that. We feel like we do a pretty good job of differentiating between needs with the surveys we perform now.
Okay. Thank you.
So that inspection data that's collected year-round is recorded in our Enterprise Management System database, and these are, oh, sorry. These are examples of some of the records that go into that. They are, the PCI and other measures are recorded on what we call a subsegment level. And a subsegment typically goes from, is a one-block section from intersection to intersection. But they can also be subdivided further if there's something like a pavement change or a significant width change in between intersections. And at present, our database for the city's network has over 23,000 subsegment records So prior to 2012, we had, the city had a longstanding approach to outsource pavement preservation that was primarily driven by PCI. PCI was all we really tracked. PCI was all we really measured. Programs were constructed annually. They were done so based on PCI, based on, you know, anything that we didn't complete the prior year that we thought we were going to, that would be prioritized. It was driven a lot by customer requests and complaints. And then the experience of our in-house staff and the maintenance they were performing over the year also fit into that as well. One of the problems and at times benefits of that was, like Gary mentioned, in theory and often in practice, any given street was no more than one year away from being in the program. And there were times where I really wish we could have that back, but what we found was that doesn't really work too. It might work well for a given street or a given customer, but in terms of the entire network, it's not a very good approach over time. So the impetus for us to look at moving away from that longstanding approach and making a change, and it culminated in 2011. It's had several things come together at once. For several years, staff had observed a steady decline in the average network PCI that we were tracking, and we had projections that that was going to continue unless something changed. City leadership at the time was also interested in expanding the budget, growing the budget. The budget had been pretty stagnant for several years. And before we did that... the budget. The budget had been pretty stagnant for several years. And before we did that, leadership and staff wanted to make sure that we would be spending that additional money, as well as the money we had, in the best way we could going forward. So we took a, wanted to take a good, hard look at that. Meanwhile, there was also work going on on an updated comprehensive plan. And there were some questions arising from that, that we were being asked, that we could not answer with PCI. And there were questions like, what constitutes a deficient street? And what is the cost of deferred maintenance? And the average PCI, you know, just couldn't give us that. So in order to address those concerns, a move away from the PCI to more meaningful measures like return on investment or ROI was essential. We had some ideas about how to do that, but we didn't really have a tool to kind of put it all together and move forward. The next few slides illustrate some of the concepts we wanted to explore and ultimately did include in the decision support tool. All of them share the same axes you see here. We have time on the X-axis in years, and PCI on the Y-axis from 0 to 100. And traditionally, we've got the line there marked at 70, which was traditionally considered satisfactory for a street. I'd also just caution going forward here for a few slides that these are conceptual. They're not necessarily to scale, but they do a good job of getting the concepts across, and the concepts are accurate, and the concepts are to scale. So one of the things that the PCI was missing, if we're focused just on PCI, we're really just looking at that Y-axis and a linear line to a certain point on that axis. And what it marginalizes or fails to account for is the fact that pavements degrade at different rates over time. For instance, here we can see, this is a typical kind of industry-standard degradation curve for an asphalt pavement. We can see that the curve starts out relatively flat as environmental factors like oxidation kind of start to take effect. And we have opportu, oh, I'm skipping ahead, sorry. As those things start to take effect, then you have, you know, thermal expansion and contraction in this ever-more brittle material that begins to crack in places. And the curve starts to get a little steeper. Then you get water penetrating into those cracks. You get the freeze thaw cycle during the winter, and it's expanding and contracting in the subgrade, leading to more deterioration. It just kind of accelerates through that time period and drops pretty dramatically until it gets to a pretty poor condition, and then it starts leveling off.
Real quick, Aaron.
Yes.
What's the difference between asphalt streets and residential areas, and then some other of the higher-traffic areas, like industrial areas and whatnot? How big of a difference is there in, is there in the, how long until we need those streets to be repaved with asphalt?
Fairly significant. We see the arterials degrade much more quickly than the residential streets. We also see the level of acceptance to be lower in terms of PCI. A street can be in poorer condition in a residential setting and still be generally acceptable to users, whereas comparatively an arterial, if it got, you know, it becomes unacceptable sooner.
Okay, thank you.
So focusing on the PCI also fails to account for the fact that different types of pavement degrade differently. This curve, this new curve, represents a typical concrete street degradation curve. And as Gary mentioned, they do tend to last longer than asphalt streets. PCI also doesn't account for the same thing for the different treatments we might employ. Those all degrade at different rates, too. This curve represents a rehabilitated street through a traditional approach like Millan overlay, and it degrades much more rapidly than a newly constructed street does.
So is that just asphalt?
That would be, yeah, that would be a rehabilitated asphalt street. And so the time factor that's added here is really quite critical, and it's not captured with the PCI. For instance, here we can see that, I mean, if you had a hypothetical network that was average rating of 100, but it was composed of all rehabilitated asphalt streets, you're in a much different situation than if you have an average PCI of 100, and your network is made up of concrete streets. Because you're going to reach 70 in 11 years in the former, and you're going to have 30 years before you get there in the latter. A PCI approach also tends to discount opportunities for intervention early in a pavement's life. That flat part of the curve that we talked about earlier, when that oxidation begins to set in and make asphalt brittle, we have an opportunity to come in with like a preservative seal and rejuvenate that asphalt, restore flexibility, restore ductility, and forestall things like raveling and cracking. A little later down the curve, we have opportunities to do things like crack seal and keep the water out, keep it from getting down into the subgrade, expanding and contracting, and further degrading the road. Beyond that, we get into, if we catch it early enough, we might be able to do just a seal coat, maybe a seal coat with some, a few structural repairs. And that trend kind of continues down until we get into the more intensive rehabilitation-type treatments, and eventually full reconstruction under a traditional approach. Then, of course, as we go down that curve, you'll notice that the treatments themselves get much more expensive. So in a traditional PCI-based approach, you're not really counting those missed opportunities at the top end. You're just not, and your focus tends to be on what's the worst street, right? You end up with something mimicking a worst-first Along with, so if you combine that cost with the life expectancy of various treatments, you begin to see differences in the return on investment, too. Like here, you might, under a traditional approach, wait until the pavement degrades to the point where rehabilitation like a Millan overlay is required. And you could do one, and you might buy about a year for every dollar per square yard that you invest. Alternatively, you could invest money earlier on in those very cheap treatments to keep a good road in good condition, and you could get something on the order of five years of extended life for every dollar per square yard that you invest. Another concept we wanted to explore was for pavements that are already in poor condition, and it's too late to catch them early on. We wanted to evaluate the benefit of a different approach to traditional rehabilitation, something that we call mitigation. And in a typical Millan overlay, what we noticed was you have, you know, sporadic structural failures typically throughout a pavement, but in between, you have lots of good pavement. In a Millan overlay, you remove typically two inches of the entire surface. So all of that good stuff in between is being removed. Then you're working on structural repairs underneath. And we noticed over time that the structural repairs that we were doing after we removed the two inches of pavement weren't really very much different than the structural repairs we would do if we hadn't removed all of that pavement. So we started looking at an alternative approach that sees us strategically repairing those spots, and then instead of, and then salvaging all of that good pavement in between, and then coming back and surfacing it with a thin lift, like an ultra-thin surfacing. The return on investment difference isn't as significant when we compared preservation with rehabilitation. But when you model this kind of thing, you start to see the impact of, well, that money that we saved here gets reinvested at the top in keeping a good street good, for instance. So your overall return ends up being even better. So to try to kind of summarize all of that, a PC-centric approach tends to view only poor-conditioned pavements as being deficient. But what we believed was that any missed opportunity to maximize ROI along the curve should be considered a deficiency. And if a street needed a crack seal but couldn't get it or didn't get it, it was deficient because we missed an opportunity to make the most of our money on that street. And then we also felt that we could find a way to quantify that deferred maintenance in terms of a difference in return on investment over time. So we had these concepts in mind, but we lacked a tool for kind of putting it all together and testing and quantifying the results. What we desired was a model that would allow us to identify these three things: the short- and long-term results of a traditional strategy and budget, the strategy that maximizes return on investment over time, and that over time, the time period we were looking at was 40 years. So pretty close to two pavement cycles for an asphalt street. And then, as opposed to maximizing the ROI, we were also looking at the strategy that tended to optimize our overall results over time. And those results were measured in overall return on investment, the total network value, the network remaining acceptable service life, which harkens back to what we talked about with arterials and residentials and kind of the acceptance level being different. For each of these, we've established a level at which our customers typically, you know, start demanding that something be done. And we consider that the point where the street has zero acceptable service life remaining. And then we also looked at the number of lane miles that we had throughout the network that were at zero remaining service life, all at the end of this 40-year model period. So we did set about looking for kind of an off-the-shelf program that would do this. Unfortunately, we couldn't find anything that already existed. Most of the software that we did find was very much PCI-based. It was reliant on you basically telling it what the right approach was first, and then you could say, I want to spend this much. Tell me what PCI I'm going to get. Or I want to have this PCI. Tell me how much I have to spend. So nothing that really did what we wanted it to do. We did find one vendor who was willing to custom-build something for us, but the cost was on the order of $200,000 for the first year, and then $25,000 every year after for licensing and maintenance. So, which seemed exorbitant at the time. So staff kind of took up the challenge of trying to develop this tool in-house. And we did. We utilized Excel to do it, not necessarily because it's the best solution, but because we knew how to use it, and we knew we could make it work. We did run up against the program's memory threshold a number of times and had to kind of change our approach to get the size down and to get the size right. In fact, we ended up with, the DST is actually composed of five different workbooks because of the size, and they're all linked together. They all cover eight years of the model run. So when one finishes, the results are fed into the next. This and the next few slides contain representative screenshots from the DST. It doesn't have a screenshot of everything, but here we see that a significant component of the model is the asset and condition survey results that are regularly updated. Those are imported into the model, but first, those 23,000 individual subsegments are consolidated into what we call supersegments, and they're grouped together by their classification, whether they're residential, collector, or arterial, their pavement type, and their condition, and as importantly, their location. So we're talking about, you know, a neighborhood will probably be all the same supersegment. So when the model's doing its evaluation, it's looking at these supersegments as if it's an individual street, but it actually represents a group of multiple streets, and it's evaluating the average condition of that group rather than individual subsegments. Elsewhere in the model, we have degradation curves for each and every combination of classification and pavement type. So the model will degrade things over time according to those curves as we go throughout the 40 years.
So there are 23,000 subsegments. How many supersegments are there, since they're grouped by multiple?
There's around 2,000. The DST allows us to add and remove and prioritize different treatment types. So we can, you know, evaluate different mixes and matches. What if we only did Millan overlay for 40 years? What would that look like? What if we only did crack seal for 40 years? Those kinds of scenarios, we can model and see what the results would be. Elsewhere in the model, the applicability of these treatments, the cost, and the resulting degradation curve is defined for each combination, again, of pavement type and street classification, whether it be arterial, residential, or collector. Each and every one of those will have a different curve. And the model also allows us to prioritize our selections based on a number of factors, including treatment type, pavement type, and the preceding treatment type. So if we wanted to make sure we prioritized seal coat on streets that previously had seal coats, we could do that. So once all So once all that was constructed, we had a third-party engineering firm review and confirm the accuracy of the DST's results. We developed some trivial data sets that they ran separately. We ran in the model. We compared the results and they, they certified that it was accurate and working as it should. After we had that confirmation, we set about modeling nearly as many distinct combinations of strategy and approach that we could come up with. This is just a little piece of a much longer list that represents different combinations of strategy, whether we were working prioritizing from the top down, good first, worst last, or worst first to the good streets last, mixing and matching those with different treatment types, and seeing how things shook out over that 40-year period. Among all those results, we kind of came up with three bookend outcomes. And when we started the model run in 2014, I think it was, 2013, 2014, we were then looking at a network value of just over 500 million, network remaining acceptable service life of over 46,000, and the lane miles at RSL equals zero, were just over 900. Worst-first prioritization, where we were just looking at do the worst streets first with rehabs and, and traditional approaches, took us to a very bad place very fast over time, didn't have much in the way of value or remaining service life at the end of that period. And what we did have was a whole lot of network that was at RSL equals zero, had zero remaining service life. The approach that yielded the best results here was one that served to maximize the ROI. So it was focusing on those high-return-on-investment treatments that you can do at the start of the curve, keeping good streets good. Then a third approach that, that was important was an alternative where we, instead of a worst-first using traditional means, we looked at a worst-first using this mitigation alternative. And instead of doing mills and overlays, we were doing more structural spot repairs followed by a, a new surface. So initially, the, the one in the middle, the maximum return on investment approach was, was kind of locked in and used to inform portions of the, of the outsourced, annual outsourced pavement preservation program from 2014 to about 2017. The, that was one of the things we kind of changed too. The model wasn't originally set up to give us a program. It was initially set up to give us the best approach, let us test things and find out what is going to be our biggest bang for the buck. But we ended up through a lot of necessity, as much as anything, needing to make some modifications so that we could begin to build programs actually using the model itself rather than just relying on, we're going to follow that approach. So that was locked in for a period of time. And then over time, we started recognizing that we just didn't have enough funds to ever get low enough of, from, working from the top to bottom, to ever get low enough to really make any kind of difference on the streets that were in averaged poor condition. And so we looked at a modified approach to, instead of maximizing the return on our investment, optimize it and see if we could get kind of the best overall results going forward. And so we ran different combinations of mitigation and preservation, ranging from 100 preservation to zero mitigation, all the way to 100 mitigation and zero preservation, and looked at all the results over a 40-year time period. And the, the combination that we found to best fit, kind of a line of best fit, was at a 60-40 split. And that's what we've been employing ever since, is 60% of the funds, we strive to invest citywide on that top-down preservation approach, 40%, we strive to invest from the bottom up using the mitigation approach. Prior, or kind of in concert with the DST development, the 2012 and 2013 outsourced pavement preservation programs included a lot of different mitigation pilots so that we could test the effectiveness of that approach, test the acceptability, and it, it proved to work quite well. In the 2014 to 2017 period, again, we were using that high maximum ROI approach combined with an attempt to quickly kind of move the needle on public perception. We identified thermal cracks, which are the, the wide bone-jarring cracks that span the full width of many asphalt streets. We identified those as being an opportunity to maybe quickly move the needle because they were widespread throughout the net, network, and they were among the severest of distresses that we had. So there was a concentrated effort over that time period to address thermal crack repairs just by spot repair on first, all the residential streets that were exhibiting them, and then second, on all the arterial streets that were exhibiting them. The first round on residential's, my recollection is that it went really quite well. We didn't have a lot of concerns expressed from the public, actually had a lot of positive comments regarding that. But we, when we went to arterials, we found, we found a very different, different outcome. The customers weren't, weren't very happy with it. Wasn't, lot, lot of factors, aesthetics being among them, of course. But, so then, starting in 2018, and since then, we've been using the optimized approach, the 60-40 split, to fully inform every year's annual outsourced pavement preservation program. Do want to note, too, that the, the thermal crack issue seems to be an issue of the past, so to speak. It's going to keep resurfacing. The repairs that we did, we estimated that they'd have a life of about seven years, and we're starting to see many of them resurface now. But the good news is the city changed its construction approach back in the late 90s and moved away from what they call a lime-treated subgrade to a reinforced aggregate subgrade. And we don't see the thermal cracks occurring in the, in the streets that are constructed with the aggregate subgrade, just on the ones that were built pre-late 1990s. So using that approach, we've seen a significant increase in the number of lane miles that we touch each year. The kind of dramatic jump there corresponds to that combination of high ROI focus and coupled with the thermal crack spot repairs, we were able to cover a lot of ground doing that. So there's kind of an artificial bump there in the 2014 through 2017 time period. Thereafter, we kind of leveled out, I think, you know, after 2021 and the COVID, inflation started catching up to us a little bit, but we're still, I mean, we've been as high as over 11 times the number of lane miles we were getting previously, like in 2011 where we only, we only touched 72 lane miles. And we've never been lower than a little over four times that amount. So we're definitely covering a lot more ground now. This is a map of this year's outsourced pavement preservation program. It shows you the, kind of the variety of treatments that we're using. I think there's seven treatments listed here. We have concrete repair, pavement joint crack seal. Localized repair is something we introduced a few years ago for, we do have situations arise where the overall average PCI of a street might be pretty good, but we become aware of a pretty isolated spot that does not, does not correspond to that PCI, but it's not widespread enough to make an impact on the overall rating. So we, we started doing these localized repair efforts to try to address those issues and those problems that wouldn't otherwise rise to the surface in the model. We have micro-surfacing, and micro-surfacing is done both as a preservation method and as a mitigation method. Preservative seals that we talked about before, ultra-thin surfacing, that's also can be both, either or, depending on the, the condition of the street, can be done from the preservation side or the mitigation side. And that's one we reserve for arterials in particular, find the finished surface to be a lot more conducive to traffic on arterials, higher rates of speeds, higher volume of traffic.
Where is this map located within the website?
On the Public Works and Utilities site, there's a, there's a link to Streets, and then there's a, another dropdown, or there's, there's another link to outsourced pavement preservation program, I believe. And this is included there along with all the previous maps, I think through 2015 or so.
And Aaron, if I can add, the OP3, the outsourced pavement preservation program, this is easy to find on the website, but then also, I like the way it's broken down by district. I mean, this is obviously the big map, but when I have residents who do have a concern about where they're prioritized, it's a great way to be able to send them the link and say, go to page 12, or, you know, go to page 14 or whatever. So it's really easy to find, and I applaud you for having it there so that way we can use it, but residents can also see, you know, all of the different things that are happening.
Glad to hear that's been helpful.
Yeah, it's helpful.
I do have one quick question. Is there a breakdown on the OP3 portal on the website that lists streets in term, or by district in terms of lane miles maintained as well? So obviously, there's the visual aspect, but is there a comparison of, you know, lane miles maintained in four versus one versus two?
Well, we have expenditures, I know. I know we have lane miles citywide. I don't think we have anything that breaks down lane miles by district, though. We do have a document that we produce every year that, that tries to explain all of this and this approach and, and talks about our selection process and the changes that have been made over time. It also includes details regarding the spending that we're proposing, and it gives lists of streets, like Councilmember Tuttle mentioned, that are, that are being proposed in each district and what treatment is, is being proposed. But I don't think we go into that level of detail yet.
Okay, if there's a way to have that, I'd be interested, just because I think there's, I mean, a clear difference in terms of just a visual aid, and so I'd be interested in seeing how that's quantified in terms of actual mileage as well.
Sure.
If there's a breakdown in terms of the, of the lane miles on the OP3 outsourcing for, you know, this 2024 per district.
I know that Aaron or Paul, like, gave you the list just for my district, it's a little complicated, but.
That information is on the website, it just doesn't have the, that specific metric of lane miles. But I think that's something we could try to work on.
It is.
If I can mention, lane miles is somewhat deceptive because of the different types of treatment. That's, we've been zeroing in more on the investment in each district because it's very possible that we could have reduced number of lane miles. In fact, this has happened in District 3, I think, where we've had a reduced number of lane miles, but, and a reduced number of projects, but the projects are expensive because of the reconstruction work that was being done.
And just to add to, in OP3, it has by each district how much is being spent. And so sometimes I'll hear, oh, District 2 gets more than anyone else, or I'll hear District 2 gets less than anyone else. And I can say it's a pie divided pretty much equally into six different components.
We're going to get to that in a few slides.
Awesome.
What is that, in terms of just the website, just OP3 on wichita.gov? Is that where I would find that?
It's under Public Works.
Go to Public Works, click on Streets, open the Streets page, it's all on there.
Thank you.
Aaron?
Yes, sir.
How, how long does the micro-surfacing, how long does, does that last?
So what we model for a residential street is around seven to eight years.
On arterial streets, how long does it last?
Not that long, but we don't, we don't use it on arterial streets anymore primarily for that reason. But we did try. We tried it for a while, but it wasn't, wasn't very successful.
So what are you doing now on, like Maze Road and Tyler?
That'll be the ultra-thin.
Ultra-thin?
Yeah.
How long does that last?
That, we're, I think we're modeling somewhere between 10 and 12 years.
Okay. Thank you. What, and I'm just curious, what causes those large cracks in residential streets that are paved?
Those are the thermal cracks.
The thermal cracks, yeah.
It's the, yeah, it's the thermal expansion of the pavement and the underlying subgrade. And we think it's probably more to do with the underlying subgrade and the fact that it, it's not flexible. Those treated subgrades were, were very hard. And having a flexible pavement on top of a brittle subgrade just doesn't work out very well in terms of those thermal cracks. Like I said, the, the new method where we have the aggregate base, we're, we're not seeing that.
Same thing.
Yeah, we're not seeing that develop in those pavements, which is, which is great going forward.
I'm going to jump in on that real quick, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
This is something I like to talk about, since you brought it up.
Yeah.
Because I'd like for all of us to take credit for this. So for almost 30 years now, because that's been the span of my career, we started, we changed the way this was done. And I like to consider it's a little bit revolutionary, and that's kind of a fancy word, but the reason why I say that is because there's a lot of communities around us that have adapted the same practices for doing this. All of our new streets, the sub-basits underneath it is recycled pavement. Aaron mentioned aggregate. That rock that goes down under those streets is all recycled pavement. So we're doing a lot for sustainability, hundreds of thousands of tons that we use every single year. When old streets that are removed, concrete and asphalt both are ground up, those are used to go back down as that sub-bay. That, that provides that flexibility that Aaron was talking about. As far as I'm concerned, it fixed the problem. That's where that came from. We're starting to see some resurface because we haven't been able to go in and completely replace those streets. I only wanted to mention that mostly from the, again, kind of the sustainability part, what we do to reuse old pavement, which I think is a big deal, and it has fixed that problem we used to have. You don't see those thermal cracks. We can see issues thermal, with the thermal properties of pavement, especially when you get temperatures like this week. We don't see those types of cracks anymore, though. Sorry.
Was that an innovative solution that, like you said 30 years ago, Wichita kind of led the way, or was that something that you saw best practices and then decided to reuse?
I think we led the way in the type of material that we were using. So there's a product, a GeoGrid, that goes down first, and what it does is it provides some stability for that rock base. We, we, we started using that material, that wasn't new to us. Other communities had used that, but the, the rock, the material that goes on top, I don't know how many people use recycled materials. It's not just us, but there's a lot of communities that will use more of a rock from a quarry, and it's got its own problems. Sometimes it's too soft, certain lime stands that don't work very well. We've even seen that KDOT's done some of that over the years, it hasn't worked ideal. So I, that was a long time ago now, and, and we were just starting things there even when I started, so I don't have a whole lot more details for you, but it's worked tremendously for us. It's saved costs long-term, needless to say, as far as bringing in rock from elsewhere, being shipped in from a quarry. So we, we've saved a lot of costs on our new streets over the years just by using that too.
So again, this is the map for this year's. So again, this is the map for this year's program, and this year we're touching about 315 lane miles. This slide is a compilation of the last 10 years' worth of programs from 2015 to 2024. And over that time period, we touched 4,828 lane miles, but many of them, the, the same lane mile was touched, you know, more than once here. We went back and did surfacing on a lot of the thermal crack repairs that we did. All the orange that you see, well, not all, but a lot of the orange that you see there is preservative seal. We typically follow up an ultra-thin on our arterial with, with that treatment, ideally the next year. So a lot of it's duplicate, but, but we are, we're, we're touching a lot of lane miles every year now, especially compared to what we were doing back in 2011 and prior to.
I do want to mention, Bob, thank you for the, I guess, the additional of expenditures don't match the lane miles, and the document provided is very helpful, too. So thank you for sending the document.
Glad to hear it, thank you. There are some challenges and limitations with the, with the model. City manager mentioned concrete streets. Concrete streets are problematic, because there's very limited options for preserving a concrete street. You can crack seal it early on. We, we don't do that as aggressively as we do asphalt streets, because of the, it's an aesthetic concern on a, on an asphalt street, and the color match is a lot closer there than it is on concrete streets. But we are this year piloting a crack seal that is supposedly supposed to match concrete much better. It's, it's a gray color. We hope to find that it works well, and it's something that we can then expand and maybe start addressing concrete streets earlier on more aggressively, but we'll see how that goes. The main problem with concrete is it's, it's really expensive to fix. And after, once you get beyond crack seal, really the only option that you have typically for a failure is full-depth removal and replacement. Years ago, there was a very short period of time, I gather, where they made the decision to go and, and surface over a lot of poor-conditioned concrete streets with asphalt. Couple of problems with that are, first, they had to go in and make repairs to anything that was so structurally deficient that it was going to impact that new asphalt layer that they were putting on, which would have constituted probably most of the repairs anyway. The second problem that's been noted since is that, that, the bond between the asphalt and the concrete isn't the greatest. And once you start to develop cracks in that top layer of asphalt, we've found that that water gets in and starts infiltrating between the layers, going through that freeze-thaw cycle, and actually traps it in there, and it ends up degrading the underlying concrete a lot quicker than it otherwise would have. So that's not something we've, we've repeated. We want to stay away from it if we can, because we don't think it's in the city's best interest. But we still have a lot of older concrete streets that have, you know, kept our overall network in pretty good shape for years and years and years, but they're now nearing the end of their useful life, and they're very expensive to maintain. So if we include, you know, a super segment that has several concrete streets in it, it almost always, the model's gonna just pick it every time. And you end up going back to 2011, where you're getting 72 lane miles or less that you're touching in any given year. So what we've done is we've kind of moved that outside the model. We're approaching them on a worst-first basis. We're spending about 25%, no, sorry, about 20%, half of the 40% mitigation, we are directing to concrete streets and, and mitigation of those. But because of their high cost, we're not getting very far very fast, and there's, there's a long list of needs. So just, you know, just, just an issue, and hopefully, we might, might be getting some additional funds to, to tackle that problem.
May I ask, there's another, so you keep talking about the expensive nature of concrete streets. What about brick streets? Also another expensive.
Same issue, yeah. We have, we have far fewer brick streets, and brick streets, the, the level of acceptance is actually quite low. People don't typically mind a brick street that, it almost looks the way it should when it has some defects.
And haven't we, instead of brick streets, now gone to, like, stamped concrete? So we still get, am I wrong? Like, in pedestrian areas especially, so it slows down traffic, because it's a distraction. It's a break in the normal, and then it's aesthetically pleasing, right? It looks kind of good, but it doesn't have the same problem. Brick streets are, yeah, they're gnarly.
Yeah, yeah, the, the brick crosswalks is something that we've strategically tried to go in and address, because we did have a lot of issues with the ones that were constructed in brick, cer- certain ones. So outside the downtown kind of core area, we have been replacing those failed brick crosswalks with stamped colored concrete, and it's been working very well. Thermal crack repair and crack seal is another thing that, selection-wise, we handle outside the model. We've tried to use the model for that in the past, and it just doesn't work very well. There's a, there's a pretty fine line between too many cracks to crack seal and just the right amount of cracks to crack seal. And the model does not do a good job of identifying that. So that's something that our technician, during the course of his surveys, he will denote that in his inspection report, whether or not it's a good time to do crack seal, thermal crack repair, those kinds of things. And then the, the final challenge that I have listed here is that we are doing, as Councilmember Tuttle mentioned, and it was brought up before, we are trying to spend proportionally in the district to match the proportion of network that is in the district. The model, however, was set up to evaluate the entire network without a distinction among districts. So what we have to do is look at the model's prioritization and kind of manually translate that by district to come up with that balanced approach.
Erin, could I just make, I'm gonna ask a question, and if I'm wrong, always tell me. But, you know, when we look at the proportion of each district, that's just what we're spending from the city's coffers. We also are really aggressive about applying for funding for WAMPO and state and fed funds as well, right?
Absolutely.
And so there's, when, when you look at that and you see the, you know, 14 million for this year, or whatever it is, yeah, thank you. But that's not including additional outside funds. The Public Works and Utilities does an amazing job of, like I said, aggressively seeking so that we can add to even what we're spending. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, in particular for, for this program, we do occasionally, we apply for it every year. It's much more competitive now than it used to be, but KDOT has a, what they call the C-Clip program, and they will participate up to, I think, $300,000 on a clink expressway, which are connections to state highways that run through the city and the city maintains. So we do apply for those funds. I think on average anymore, we, we get them maybe once every three years. And, and when we do get them, what we've done historically anyway, is we've split that cost evenly among all the districts, because they are expressways and they tend to be utilized by everyone.
And I, this slide right here answers my question about the proportionality, so I don't need any more follow-up regarding that.
Okay, great.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Great, thank you.
But I did have a question for you. So the tool that you all created has everything kind of listed by the priority and not necessarily the district. So is it more efficient to deal with it on the priority or proportionally by district?
Is it more efficient?
Mm-hmm. Because some things would wait so that you can match districts to make sure they get an equal amount of money. So would it be better for the network if you just addressed from number one down, no matter where the district was?
It's probably a question of effectiveness more than efficiency. And I think you'll find, if you treated the city as one unit, you'd be most effective if you went on the priority system regardless of district, right? But at the same time, you still are improving our useful life of our streets by preserving those that are newer streets under this method. It's, it's not as if we're throwing dollars away. Each district has different priorities. So I don't know how much, I don't know if we can quantify how much we're losing by doing that. If we were doing worst-first, then you definitely would lose a lot of ground if you were doing it by district, I think. But with the 60/40 split, it's probably less impact.
Okay.
It, it is an advantage in a way, too. We still maintain the 60/40 split citywide, but we vary, we vary that split among districts. But overall, citywide, that split remains the same. And that, we don't, in the model, we wouldn't have the flexibility to adjust that by need in each district as much as we're able to now. So like, you know, Districts 1, 3, and 4, 1, 3, 4, and 6 have a lot of our older concrete streets. Districts 2 and 5 do not. So we're doing a lot of that work in those districts, so the balance might be skewed in those districts towards mitigation. But then in 2 and 5, we're skewed more towards preservation, and the overall mix still works. If that makes sense. So the, that, the DST and the new approach is by no means the only factor that's contributed to the results over, you know, since 2011. The City Council has also approved funding increases in the CIP virtually every year since 2013. This year's $13 million budget is twice what we had in 2013, and we're slated in the adopted CIP to increase to 16 and a half million in 2033.
Well, and Erin, the 20, 2009 to 2013 is a little deceptive, because if I remember right, 2009, 2010, I think we were in that 2 million, 2 to 3 million dollar range, and we were actually cutting back the program during the recession.
Yeah. So it was 6 and a half million at the most, sorry, yes. So using the combination of the approach and increased funding, we've seen our asset value increase and stabilize. And we're projecting it to kind of remain stable over the 40-year period. Not a, not a lot of improvement, but not, you know, not, not declining either. Basically, holding things steady. Remaining acceptable service life, those values project about the same. We've made some gains, and, and we think we're at a point now where we're gonna level off. And really, the same applies to the lane miles that we have, that still have remaining acceptable service life in them. It's greater than zero. We saw a pretty good drop-off there in the early years, when we were focusing on the higher ROI treatments, but since then, we've, we've made some gains, and it's leveling off.
We didn't want to inundate you with tons of information, but I think the early slides, when we first were introducing this program, were really telling regarding what would happen with remaining service life if we didn't make these kinds of investments that the council has. They were basically very steep drops in terms of number of streets with zero life left, right? And it was, it's amazing to see the trend now under this model, how it's changed. But we could not continue business as usual under that old system.
I think that's, that's all I have, but I'm happy to stand for any questions.
If I could go back, sorry, I can't appear to butt in the first time, I didn't mean to, but I wanted to go back to your first question, Mayor, if you don't mind, and expand on that real quick. You'd asked about available information to the public, which is a really good question, and one that we get a lot. We have found something that I think is fairly effective. So you can see from the complexity of what we're looking at, it's not just a number. And if we even tried to do that, it would be misleading in a lot of ways. What we have found that's worked pretty well is every fall, when we come to the council, we've got a list of streets that are gonna be, have something done to them the following year. That information's available every October, it's on our website. That is only for one year. Erin talked about how we evaluate the streets every 18 months. We don't see drastic changes necessarily, but things can change. Climate is, is the biggest thing we battle, right? With our climate and the ups and downs, the heat that we're gonna see this week. And then we go to the extreme cold in the winter, does more to our pavement than anything. So things can change. We don't want to make a commitment too far out, tell people we're gonna be there in two or three years and have that change. That's not ideal either. So what we have found, I think, works fairly well is when folks have inquiries, Erin and his staff can plug that into the model and, and get a general timeframe. My opinion is, it's worked pretty well. People know it's on the radar. Their instincts are usually fairly well. They see a street that's having some issues, they'll call and we'll see it. Within a couple of years, we'll probably get there. I think it's not the best for us for providing information, but I think it's kind of working because of the size of our system, because of the size of our model. I think it's, it's probably the best we can do, and it's okay. But above and beyond that, I might remind you about our in-house services also. We will go out and mitigate hazardous conditions, right? Our staff repairs 70,000 potholes a year. Sometimes those don't last very long, depending on what happens with the weather. If we actually happen to get rain from time to time, we might have to go back out and fix them again. But we've also got some other resources. Our spray-injection patch truck, which is a single-operator truck, it provides more structural repairs we can send out to streets and, and keep them going until such time that the program shows up to do something more substantial. So I think we've got some things in place that really help with that. Right now, what's working pretty well is, is we'll, I think it was just this morning, everybody here got an email about Greenwich Road that you'll see, Councilmember Tuttle sent on to us. We will look at the model and see what it shows and respond to that, too. It's kind of deceiving, right? Perception is reality, I shouldn't say deceiving, but perception is reality. We talk to a lot of people who believe they have the worst street in the community, and it may actually be 10 years before we're actually gonna do anything to it, but that's the way they see it. So it's hard for us to put anything out there more than a year ahead of time, but I think we've done a pretty good job of, of being able to respond otherwise.
May I add one additional comment to that? We, we all get these types of emails, "My street is the worst," et cetera. And I think, once we figure out which district that problem is, we send it off to the council member who is responsible for that area. And now knowing that Erin can calculate and give approximate with the caveat, and always giving that caveat of, it's dependent on climate and dependent on really prioritization, I think it would be nice to also add, anytime that we, we say something like, "It won't get taken care of for another few years, but next year, in your district, we have this coming up." I think that gives people a balance to understand you're still important, but your district is also on the radar, and I think that that would be helpful in responses.
I appreciate that, and we'll keep that in mind.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you. The Public Works...
The Public Works, by the numbers that we got from Megan yesterday, talking about snow and ice removal and feet maintained by facilities, potholes and all that stuff, is really incredible. We hear a lot of critics, you know, about the roads, but actually seeing what you guys do in numbers is extremely impressive, and I just want to say thanks.
Thank you.
I'd just like to chime in, too. I was gonna mention that. And then also, not only do we get the email from comms about, you know, the different data points, which I just think are fantastic to have, but there's a new document, or I don't know what you call it, graphic, the word on the streets. I'm not exactly sure how we're gonna use this, but I think it's great. I'm gonna keep a copy in my pocketbook and show people all the time. But also, just thanks for all your work on OP-3, because really, and I know it's been said, but just to be a little redundant, people sometimes think that we just kind of wake up and decide what we're gonna fix next, or, you know, that whatever. And it's just nice to be able to say, "We have a plan." And we have content experts who are using data to make data-driven decisions in the community. So it helps people to understand a lot more about, you know, how we do, what we do, and why we do what we do. So thank you for all of your work and for the presentation today.
Our expertise is often questioned, but I appreciate hearing that.
I also want to say thank you, and just to request that all future presentations be entitled "Who's Down With OP-3?"
Well, you know me. Just one question real quick. How much consideration has been given to just not do the 40% by district? Just looking at strictly the worst roads in Wichita and trying to address them on the back end strictly by just the need, as opposed to breaking it down district by district?
Sorry, consideration is just doing the worst first citywide with the 40%?
The 40% that we're catching up and just applying that just universally throughout the city, as opposed to breaking it down district by district?
Well, when we were developing the model and making the initial runs, and we had settled on an approach, I can't say for sure whether it was the maximum ROI approach that we modeled, or if it was the 60-40 split that was modeled. But we did look at, I think it was over either five or 10-year period, what does a citywide approach look like when we then, after the fact, look at the districts, right? And we expected it kind of balance itself over time, and what we found was it really didn't. And there were some pretty big discrepancies in terms of overall spending in each district. And that's kind of how we arrived at the proportional by network.
So does, what was the timeline with that, though? Were we getting more streets back to kind of usable, workable grades by doing that model? Or was that kind of focusing on some of the more expensive ones first and...
Well, I think that one would have been, I mean, it's, it might have been the ROI, the one that tried to maximize the return on investment, possibly. But I guess my concern would maybe be if we do a worst-first approach, greater than 40, a lot greater than 40%, potentially in specific districts over time, then the network within that district is going to start to perform like that option that we looked at citywide, where after a 40-year period, it was in better shape than if we did traditional rehab, but it wasn't in good shape compared to one that had a mix of preservation, where we were getting a lot of bang for the buck and the mitigation.
Right, yeah. I mean, I agree that we need to focus on preservation of the good streets that we have right now, the 60%. I'm just trying to think of some people in some of these neighborhoods who it will be maybe a decade before they get to it because the spending in the district is, it's more expensive for the concrete streets, so...
Sure, sure. Well, and that's, I'm hopeful that the proposed inclusion of additional funds for concrete streets in the CIP, and the proposed CIP, could make a big difference there.
You know, when we did the drill down after we received the citizen survey, and we looked specifically at the street maintenance answers, and we were able to pretty much pinpoint the greatest dissatisfaction was with residential streets.
Right.
And so I'm looking at the chart that is on slide 30, and if we just look at your district, there's almost $1 million goes into ultra-thin surfacing, which will basically target those residential streets. And, you know, I've seen the impact that has on a neighborhood, because they're doing underlying repairs to the surface before they do the ultra-thin. And I believe that will really address some of those concerns that are coming from the residents. In fact, in almost every district, we're hovering around that million-dollar line, except for districts one and two. So, and they've got emphasis on what I think is either concrete repairs or micro-surfacing, which would be probably more arterials. And so I'm kind of with Aaron. I don't know that there's, I think right now, we're hitting the mark in terms of what residential, the residents' expectations are. And the concrete street program, we've added to deal with those that are the most severe complications for us.
Okay, yeah. I mean, for the most part, I'm getting positive reports about the main arterials of my district. We've done a lot of work to catch up on those. It's just, yeah, most of the concern is back in the residential areas, we haven't seen any work.
That's the tilt now, and you'll see that in your district this year.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if we could only get gray crack seal. Sorry, my shameless plug.
We're gonna pilot some this year, so, yeah. Yeah, we're hopeful.
Just one more time, I think, just to reiterate the message from Gary. Can you remind people what residents can do? Obviously, we can't replace every single street. It's gonna be a multi-billion-dollar investment if we've replaced all of our street system. What are things that residents can do to help Public Works? I think you mentioned potholes, but can you go over that one more time?
Well, yeah. I mean, by letting us know about issues that arise and concerns that they have, it's a lot of network, and it's a lot of ground to cover. We have one person who definitely sees every street once every 18 to 24 months, but other than that, we just don't have very many people that are out and about. And there are going to be things that we just don't know about until someone lets us know. So we definitely encourage people to do that.
Yeah, don't assume that we know about a pothole, right? And, you know, we've been proud of the quick turnaround that we have on reports of potholes or other surface problems. So if people have something that's developing in their street, please let us know immediately.
Yeah, I'd like to compliment the staff on potholes. Did a great job. So I appreciate that. And just to remind residents, they can go online, city website, put in where the pothole is, and it'll get fixed within a day or two, so...
They do a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you haven't seen the one-person truck, by the way, that's another one of my favorite pieces of equipment, so more than happy to do a demonstration of that.
I'll be out there for it. They won't let me touch it, just like they won't let me touch the tree boom.
You gonna let Bob use the machine?
I have to ask to do it myself, so we'll go out someday.
Thank you, Aaron.
That's all we have, yes.
Thank you, Aaron. Great job.
Thank you very much.